Calling to order the Monday, June 4th, 2012, regular meeting of the 34th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kedekel? Councilmember Plaidonsen?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Are there any additions, changes? Hearing none. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. I see we have Reverend Tal Sullivan with us this evening. Would you please stand for the invocation?
As we get ready to pray, Mother's Day was a few weeks ago. Father's Day is coming up, and I would just like to ask you to agree with me as we pray together to open the city council meeting, pray over the families of the city of Berkeley. So, God, we thank you that you care about us. God, we thank you for mothers and for fathers, and during this period of many weeks here where we honor moms and we honor dads, God, we think of the families that are represented in our city, Berkeley, and we ask that you would bless the families of Berkeley. Thank you for the strength of the homes here in our city. God, thank you for the love that's represented, and I pray that you would minister in each of the families, and I think of the families even represented by our leaders, and I ask that you would bless their families, give the moms and the dads wisdom as they raise their children. I pray, God, that they would speak into their children and it would cause for our community to be stronger and stronger. We do thank you, God, for the many blessings of our city, and we ask that you would bless our leadership, give them wisdom, and as we continue to make tough decisions, Lord, with finances, that we would be good stewards of everything that you have provided for us. I pray that in this meeting you would help this council to rule well and give them wisdom. I pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on the agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Well, seeing no one coming -- oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't realize we just stepped up.
That's right. Thank you.
My name's Joel Alpherts. I've been a resident since 2001, and over the years I've come to expect a certain level of service, and I understand that, you know, budget constraints may have reduced that service, and I'd like to get the city manager and the director of DPW to explain to me their plan for maintaining some level of service regarding, you know, the roads or the tree in front of my house, you know, with respect to all the other trees that are being cut down, or in the terms of City Hall, the maintaining of, you know, a certain quality of life by, I guess, maintaining the ordinance or making sure things are up to code. And I did attend some of the meetings last week, and I do understand that, you know, the Coolidge improvements are by the wayside at this point, but just general DPW work, I guess I'd like feedback on, as well as from City Hall.
Very good. Anyone else? Make sure you leave your name with the clerk before you leave. Thank you. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item number one, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the 34th City Council on Monday, May 21st, 2012.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman with support from Mayor Protem Turbrak. Are there any corrections, changes? Seeing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now we move to the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Motion number M-3112, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute a Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement between the City of Berkeley and Comcast of the South Incorporated and Colorado Corporation doing business as Comcast.
Is there a motion to approve M-3112?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. You know, this franchise agreement before you is, I suppose, something that would be considered just an annual thing to do, but it is probably a ver -- it is, not probably, but it is one of the most important documents that we approve as City Council, although we work very closely with the -- with our group with regards to cable, ICA, I believe is the acronym that they use, in order for us to make sure that we follow the cable rules together. Now, with us this evening, I've asked the attorney from Bayer Howlett, Mike Shalhany, who works for this group, for ICA, and I've asked him to please just give us a brief overview of what this contract means to the city of Berkeley and an action that's required by the city council. Welcome, Mr. Shalhany. Thank you very much. If you don't mind, just go over briefly in terms of what this agreement is all about, and then recommendation for the city council as well.
Absolutely. First of all, good evening. My name is Mike Shalhany. I work with Bayer Howlett. We are the attorneys with the ICCA, the Cable Board that Berkeley is a member of. Years ago, municipalities were free to enter their own franchise agreements with each of the cable providers. In 2006, that all changed after myself and Tim Courier tried a case in front of the MPSC called Coast to Coast versus the City of Birmingham. As a result of that litigation, the state of Michigan and the MPSC came up with a standard form, and that's what I believe you have in front of you. It's called the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement. And basically what it is, is a fill-in-the-blank for the cable providers to put in the name of the city, their contact information, and the amount of fees that they will be paying you as part of their, just cable support fees and the peg fees. What the statute requires you to do is after you receive it from the provider, you have 15 business days to look at it and see if it's complete. It's really not hard for them to file an incomplete franchise agreement because really the two most significant lines, which are the fees, they leave blank, and the MPSC has said that that's okay. Otherwise, if they have filled out their name and signed it, it's basically complete. And also, there's a map requirement, but the state has really watered that down to really a bare-bones requirement. You received your franchise agreement from Comcast. It was sent to us. I've reviewed it. I have determined that it is complete and in compliance with the MPSC regulations and the statutory requirements. What I did at that point was you have to notify Comcast within those 15 business days as to whether or not it's complete. If you don't, they just deem it to be complete. I took the liberty and prepared a template for you to send to Mr. Tim Collins, who is a regional senior vice president at Comcast, notifying them within those 15 business days that it is complete, and did it in a Word document so that you could just cut and paste the whole thing onto your letterhead and have whoever you want sign it, but it has to get to them within those 15 business days. You received it on May 16th, and the holiday doesn't count, so the 15th business day is June 7th. Now, that's not the only shot clock that's running. There is a 30-day, straight-day clock that's running from the date that you received it, and that's when council must take action, either approving or denying the actual permit. And that's a decision for you guys as a council to make. What I can tell you is this is a complete application, and therefore it meets all the statutory requirements. After you make your decision, either up or down on whether to approve the franchise agreement, you then have to notify Comcast of whatever action you took, either approving it or denying it, and I always attach a copy of the resolution, because if you don't do that, it's deemed approved. So you just can't sit on it or table it or mothball it. You have to take some action, otherwise it's automatically approved, and you have to notify them of that. So that's what I've put together, at least as far as the 15-day notification. Whatever council decides on approval, we do need to follow up with Comcast on that with the appropriate notification, but that's where we stand at this point. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them or not.
Any questions for Mr. Shalhany? Mr. Ba -- Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate your time here and for helping us ensure that we cross the right Ts and dot the right Is. A couple of quick questions, not so much about the contract itself, but about the process. And so, first question is around timing. So you mentioned this act had been in place for a little while now, and I'm curious as to the timing for Comcast now here in 2012.
They're timing to do what?
To bring this before us. Is there an existing contract that's due to expire, and this is going to replace that? Is that kind of?
Right, and that's why they're sending this in front of you. Through ICA or the ICCA, that used to be the body that negotiated all of the terms of these franchise agreements. That's where the provider said it's such an onerous process because they're dealing with, you know, tens of thousands of communities, so they've come up with the statewide form statewide. That franchise agreement is about to expire, so they're keeping this one, you know, ready to go right out of the chute.
Great, so I think that helps with my next question, which is about our other cable providers. So as you know, there's -- we have multiple in the city and Comcast being one of them, and I was just curious on timing for the others, and perhaps if I can infer from your response, then it would be whenever those existing agreements are due to expire, we would follow this process next time? Is that?
That's correct. Many municipalities in ICA have wide-open west, or WOW, as we call them, and I received not only Comcast but WOW franchise agreements for many communities. I didn't receive one for Berkeley. Now, I don't know, I'd have to go back and take a look at the franchise agreement as to when, if you do have a franchise agreement with them, when that would expire, but I haven't received it yet, so there must be a little more time.
Sure, I could infer that as well, so thank you for that. And final question around the notion of franchise agreements and renewals. So if I'm a resident at home watching this on Comcast or one of the other providers, could you highlight the types of things that would be impacted by a franchise agreement renewal? I mean, are their rates going to change? Is there anything different from their perspective?
Municipally, no. This just gives the cable provider the right to enter into the rights of way and install their facilities, whether it's above ground or below ground. It also gives them the right to do business within the city. Now, rates are a whole 'nother matter. I can make no guarantee as to what any cable provider will do with their rates, but what this does is this gives them a license to operate within the city of Berkeley.
Excellent. So as you mentioned, this is a renewal. Obviously, they've been operating here for many years already, so this just renews and keeps them on the up and up.
Well, it keeps them -- it keeps them -- it keeps their ability to continue to do business in Berkeley. And I'll tell you, the state of Michigan has made these forms so ironclad in favor of a cable provider that if you were to say no, you would have to prove that you weren't doing so unreasonably. And I can tell you, the MPSC told me during that trial back in 2001, they exist to roll out and disseminate cable franchises. So they are there to help roll out competition, not to stand up for municipal rights.
Sure, sure. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Just one quick question. Is this the same form that we executed a year ago?
Yes.
Okay, so no change in the wording or anything? It's just the two blanks?
Unless the gentleman who signed it at the back end, Mr. Collins, unless that name changed, there are none.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Councilmember Plaidonsen?
Just also for the people at home, and maybe this is for Mr. Sessa, could you tell a little bit about what this means for the city? Do we get money for this? Is this something more required to do? Do we have to pay to be part of this? Just a little background on how this impacts the city.
Well, we do get a franchise, we receive franchise fees, and I don't believe that a lot of the services will change in terms of Comcast. We've been doing this for, oh my God, I don't know how many years, so it's been, I know it's been more than 10 years since we've done this. It is an agreement, as I said, that as important as it is, we have very little say in it, but in terms of services, it's simply cable services that we usually get for residents and our businesses. They also provide internet services for us. Comcast just simply provides services to the residents and to businesses. For us, the only thing we receive is a franchise fee, which I believe, Mr. Suboda, if you don't mind, what is the annual amount that we get from Comcast? I want to say about 30, but I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to think up.
In terms of annual fee?
I can't recall the actual fee from this company. In total, from the three providers, we receive about $250,000 from the three providers.
I can tell you that for the franchise fee, I believe the percentage of gross revenues is 5%. I'd have to go back and look. Usually the, in this agreement, as the one before, also provides financial support for your peg channel, and that is 1%. We asked Comcast if they would increase that to 2% of their gross revenues. They declined.
And that is very good to remember as well. We have our own government access channel, which is the peg, and this meeting today is being aired under that, so that's one of the things that we're able to get. Comcast and WOW are able to air public announcements from the city of Berkeley, and that is one of the benefits that we receive.
Thank you.
Mr. Suboda?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question for council, if I may?
Absolutely.
I'm looking at the fee section, Section 6. We have two options, option one, option two. My copy is blank. Do you have a recommendation here, or can we add this in later, or does this have to be part of the resolution?
As I said, I want to go back and check that number. I believe it's 5%.
I believe it is also.
There has been a fight in front of the MPSC as to who actually writes that number in, and the MPSC has ruled that it is the municipality that writes that in. So that number has to be consistent with the incumbent provider. I believe it's 5%, and we can certainly put pen to paper on the municipal side and fill that in.
But do we need, does the council need to vote on that? Does it have to be part of the resolution, the 5%?
I don't think so. I don't believe so, no.
I think, Mr. Suboda, what this resolution here, this motion, empowers the city manager to execute.
Okay, okay.
Isn't that correct, Mr. Attorney?
I would definitely agree, Mayor.
Okay. I'm just, I want to make sure that we get our 5%.
We will make sure.
Very good.
As well as your 1% on the peg.
Exactly, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Very good. Then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-3112?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shalhany, for being with us.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Sessa?
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-3212, matter of awarding a bid for tennis court resurfacing work at Community Park to Goddard Coatings, the lowest qualified bidder, in the amount net to exceed $35,156.31.
Is there a motion to approve M-3212?
Motion to approve, 3212.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa?
Council, I know that you are aware that this is an item that we did budget in this year's budget, but there are some changes that we've made, and for that, I'd like to ask our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Tom Caldwell, to please give us a brief overview and hear his recommendation, and there are some changes that we're going to be discussing this evening as well, council, but I'll let Mr. Caldwell begin. Thank you, Tom.
City Manager, Mayor, Council, good evening. As Mrs. Sessa mentioned, the original budgeted line item for the tennis court project was $25,000. That included an acrylic filler for the cracks in the surfacing around the tennis courts. In the process of doing the bid work and working with the USTA on the painting and the striping guidelines, we found a new system, which is called Armor Crack Repair. And so basically, what's going to happen with our tennis courts is we're going to grind the cracks out, and then we'll fill them with an acrylic-based material so they would be, you know, flush with the existing concrete. And then what the Armor Crack Repair does is it's like a piece of fabric tape that will go over the top of the crack, and really what that allows is for, you know, with the Michigan weather, with the, you know, the expansion and the contraction of those areas, it allows for movement. Now, a lot of acrylic-based crack fillers, when either side of the crack would move, you get re-cracking, and what I investigated and learned is that sometimes if you do just a crack filler, sometimes you get a crack yet the same season. Now, I talked with the Director in Royal Oak. They've used Armor Crack Repair on one of their tennis courts. They're going on their seventh season of no cracks in those areas. Now, the Armor Crack Repair has a two-year warranty on the existing crack, so if the crack extends or if a new crack comes up, that isn't covered, but this process is much more of a higher-quality fix to the area. You know, it's my recommendation that we use the budgeted $25,000 out of the Rec-Revolving Fund, and then the remaining funds would come out of the savings from the HVAC project. Now, at this point, I haven't turned in a final bill from that project to Mr. Suboda, and so I'll be working with Finance Department to come up with the remaining funds for the tennis court project, and that budget amendment you'll see at the council meeting in two weeks. Another interesting, well, there's a couple more interesting points to the project. We're going to paint the tennis courts blue and green instead of the red and green that you currently see. If you've been driving along 11 Mile over by Woodward in Huntington Woods, they've painted their courts in this color, and this is the USTA's tournament color. It's very sharp. The six courts at Community Park are widely used throughout the community. Not only that, every car that drives into the Community Park complex for a baseball game, for a hockey practice, to come to the community center for a project or a program, excuse me, they drive right by the courts, and it's really going to look sharp. We're going to paint the lines with what the USTA calls their Quick Start Tenant Underlines, and so it was actually in the handout, there's a variety of different pictures, and in the pictures, you'll have the normal white lines that you would, but then in the blue, it'd be a lighter blue line, and it separates the court out differently so younger players, they can play on an existing court with a different court setup. And it's actually pretty neat. Kristin Harrison with Placement Tennis is ready to start tenant under tennis instruction this summer, and, you know, we're really, really excited for the project.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Caldwell? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Director, for giving us the overview of the project and some of the exciting things having to do with the newer technology to ensure that the investment that we consider tonight is long-lasting and can be enjoyed for years to come. A few quick questions, largely around timing. If we were to proceed with this tonight, when might we imagine starting the project, and how long do you think it would take to complete?
Thank you. Good question. The courts will be down for about 10 days, and Goddard Coatings is ready to go now. So, looking at the Placement Tennis, their next session is set to start June 18th. We would like to go, and this is a budgeted line item for this fiscal year, so we would be looking to go as soon as possible.
Ahead of the next set of scheduled sessions and things like that, you said, on the 18th and stuff?
Correct, yeah. It'd be great if we could get them ready to go for the June 18th tennis lessons.
Sure, cool. And would we put some kind of signage or other way to communicate the timing so as folks come by, they can kind of see? When they'd be back online?
Sorry. Yes, we have been communicating with the players that are out there during the day, and then with Kristin's program that the courts will be worked on, but not having a specific start time, we have not done that, but we certainly will get that word out and direct people to the courts that we have over at Angel and at Harvard. Both of those courts have been done by Goddard within the last five years, and they both look great, so, you know, we're really happy with the work that Goddard has provided for us in the past, and, you know, don't see any reason why we wouldn't feel that way with this program as well.
Excellent. I appreciate your confidence in the providers of the service. I'm glad that they're so highly recommended. One last quick question on the funding. You had mentioned the additional funds may come from the HVAC program. You mentioned something about savings. Can you tell us a little bit more? Are we shortchanging another project, or are we in fact harvesting the savings from a project already completed?
Well, the HVAC project, we had three units that we were looking at getting redone. We chose to do the main unit at the, it pretty much runs the multipurpose room. The other two units, one of which covers the office and the kitchen right off of the multipurpose room, and then the third HVAC unit was actually reworked five or six years ago, and so the unit itself is running properly. We actually worked with HRC engineers on the project, and it was their recommendation that, you know, really, these two are still working in fine condition. If something happens, we're redoing the main unit that covers the multipurpose room, and outside of the large meeting room and the director's office, really, all the other places can be reached by that unit. So, really, it's in the process of that learning what we could do with the tennis court project that it was my idea that, all right, if we can get the main unit done that needs to be done, we can hold off on some of the other units that, you know, that were still in good working order to be able to, you know, do the tennis court project the way that I thought it needed to be done.
Great. Thank you.
And the HVAC project was a project out of the general fund, so the $25,000 would come from Rec-Revolving, and then it's my recommendation that the tenant change come from that project, which is a general fund program.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Sessa?
I just want to thank Mr. Caldwell. Good job in terms of explaining such a difficult change. The only thing that I ask the council is that if you consider this action, that you also add a statement in there to also direct staff to come back and do a budget adjustment at the next council meeting, and that these funds come from the Rec-Revolving Fund, so that it can be done appropriate as well, and we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. We will, Steve?
Thank you again, Your Honor. I'm just curious, do we need to amend the motion for that, or is that?
Okay. Um...
Very good. We will -- Steve.
Thank you again, Your Honor. Just curious, do we need to amend the motion for that, or is that?
Okay. Mayor Protem Turbrak.
Would that be an acceptable friendly amendment?
It is acceptable. I'll allow that.
Seconded by Councilmember Baker. Would that be acceptable?
It would indeed be acceptable.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we have to vote on that amendment. So Ms. Prince, would you call that one, please?
Yes. Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, if there aren't any other questions for Mr. Caldwell, then we will move to call the roll on M 3212. Ms. Prince.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M 33-12, matter of reappointing the City Manager, Jane Baez de Sessa, as the City of Berkeley's representative and appoint Public Works Director, Derek Schuler, as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA Board.
Is there a motion to approve M 3312?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker, with support by Councilmember Plaid Onson. Ms. Sessa.
Counsel, this is an annual request that comes before you. Again, SACRA, for those of you who don't know, they are the authority that we work with in order to deal with solid waste collection and recycling. We are recommending your consideration of this, Your Honor.
Any discussion on this topic? Seeing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M 3312?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Motion Number M 3412, matter of reappointing the Berkeley Public Works Director, Derek Schuler, as the City of Berkeley's representative, and Finance Director, David Sabuda, as the alternate representative to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the SACRA Board.
Is there a motion to approve M 3412? Motion to approve by Councilmember Plaid Onson, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa.
Again, counsel, this is a routine item that's required by SACRA. And this is the authority that we work with in order to deal with the water issues for the public. We are recommending this for your consideration.
Are there any points of discussion on this one? Seeing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M 3412?
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M 35-12, matter of awarding the contract for the 12 Mile and Coolidge intersection improvements to the lowest qualified bidder, Florence Cement Company, located at 107 South Grossbeck, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043, in an amount of $328,367.10. In addition, allocate $24,000 for construction engineering services to Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, and $30,000 for construction contingencies. The total expenditure of $382,367.10 is chargeable to the following account numbers, 202-464-821.100,
Is there a motion to approve M 3512?
Motion to approve M 3512.
To approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Sessa.
Counsel, I am pleased to report that I know that there are some changes that are additions that we made to this project, and our Public Works Director will explain. But overall, I believe that we received good bids and that the recommended contractor is one that is well-known and well-recommended. As a matter of fact, a representative from that organization is here with us this evening, Mr. Tony Cardillo, who is the project manager, is here with us this evening. Before I turn the mic over to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Derek Schuler, to go over this item with you, I'd like to report just a few items. And then also, I'd like to acknowledge and recognize, and he'll probably come up and speak as well, will be our engineer from Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, Mr. Tom Beal, will also probably give a little bit of explanation in terms of what's happening this evening. First of all, I did have an opportunity to meet with the businesses and the residents. We did hold a public information meeting. We addressed a few businessmen and residents that attended that meeting. I believe overall, it was just simple questions, but primarily, it was favorable in terms of the issues, but nothing major. With regards to the businesses, their biggest concern, obviously, they're not pleased that this road is going to be reconstructed again, but they understand. And they ask that we make sure that we let the public know that the businesses are going to be open during construction. And I assured them that we would work with them very, very closely. And the city engineer and our Public Works Director will explain how we're going to do that. Please know that with all the people that I've spoken to, I will make sure that we send out notices to the businesses, in particular, whenever we're making some changes to the project, keep them informed. I'm also going to make sure that we have these notices placed on the website. So again, the public can have quick access to this as well, this information. We'll send out email blasts to everybody to let them know what's happening. We'll make sure that we post on our cable and any type of email blast that we do, again, to the public to let them know that the businesses are open during construction. And I've said to each and every one of them that I will do my best to work with them should something occur. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Derek Schuler, to go over this very important project with you. And one more thing, a very, very important thing. I did meet with our Downtown Development Authority. They had a special hearing shortly thereafter. They did approve this contract for a recommendation and finalization by the city council as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schuler.
Thank you. Good evening. We've gone through the bidding process, and I'm going to introduce Tom Beal here shortly. And as Jane mentioned, I think the public informational piece of this is going to be very important. And we plan to utilize the website flyers. We've already distributed flyers for our public informational meeting. And we're going to continue to keep everyone posted. There will be some pre-construction, if you will, informational signs that are going to be posted very shortly, notifying everyone, the traveling public, about the project, about the full closure that will take place at the intersection, as well as give our website so that we can provide other information. We've already utilized the website for the public informational meeting, and I view that as the conduit to reaching out, and hopefully, it's successful. I'm going to introduce Tom Beal right now to go over from HRC, the bidding process for this, and kind of describe a little bit about some of the highlights on the project.
Thank you, Derek. Bids were taken on Tuesday, May 15th. There were 12 books taken out for this project. There was a lot of interest. There were two bids received, and we believe that's because of the timeframe to be in order to complete this. And the two bidders were both state-prequalified, large bidders who can handle this project. The requested bids were for two options, and I know counsel's familiar with this. We talked about removing the brick, possibly milling off three inches of the existing concrete, and providing a five-inch overlay. Or the alternative was to remove the brick and concrete in one operation, repaving with 10 inches of non-reinforced concrete, start from scratch, basically, put a new road down. That would be the safest option from a standpoint of not knowing what you've got underneath and making sure that it's done right. Didn't know where the prices would come in, but they came in very favorably. Both options would have, in the base bids, included colored-stamped concrete crosswalks, similar to 11 Mile and Coolidge and 12 Mile and Woodward. Both options included repair of the sidewalk ramps at all four corners of the intersection to meet current ADA standards. The two corners that were done by the Road Commission last year don't quite meet ADA, and they have to be corrected. The Road Commission has indicated that they will pitch in $5,000 to make those repairs. The other two corners and the additional work would be CDBG funds, and that's approximately $30,000. So there'd be about $35,000 of funds outside of DDA city funds for doing that work. As has been mentioned, the low bidder was Florence Cement Company with a mill and overlay cost of $304,519. The complete removal was $328,367. But if you take off the costs that we had for the contributions for CDBG funding and from the Road Commission, the actual prices were $269 for the mill and overlay and $293,367 for the complete removal. If you'll recall, the original engineer's estimate over a year ago for this project, we budgeted $300,000 for the construction, plus the $30,000 that we have in there for contingencies and the engineering fees. So we were under budget, including doing the complete removal. We contacted the Michigan Concrete Association, the Road Commission for Oakland County, and soils and materials engineers, who are the guys that did the corrings out there, they're paving experts. All parties agreed, including our office, that for the price and with the service life that you'd get, the alternate, which is the complete removal and the 10 inches, it'll be performed quicker, it'll get the job done faster, which I know the business owners want to see, and will give you a longer service life, and we're recommending that as the alternative for proceeding with this project. The low bidder, Florence Cement, as I'd mentioned, is pre-qualified, state-prequalified, has provided satisfactory references for similar municipal work in Grosspoint Farms, Oak Park, and St. Clair. They've also performed at least three, four jobs in the last three years for Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, so we are familiar with this contractor. And Michigan Concrete Association gave them a favorable rating also in a letter. On that basis, we recommend award to Florence Cement Company in the amount of $328,367.10 for the construction, plus construction engineering layout and materials testing at $24,000 and $30,000 for contingencies. As I'd said, both of these were part of the original budget numbers when you were contemplating the project last year. If awarded, the schedule at this point in the contract is for the intersection closure to begin on June 19th, and the road would reopen to traffic August 6th, one week prior to cruise week. And that would be posted one week in advance at Coolidge and 13 Mile, Coolidge and 11 Mile, 12 and Greenfield, and 12 and Woodward. There will be signs out there indicating that, beginning on August 19 -- or, excuse me, on June 19th, that intersection will be closed. It will also indicate that all local businesses will be open during construction, and there will be specific signage for the businesses that are affected right at the intersection, which indicates that they are open during construction. Those will be posted closer to the businesses so that people coming down the street will understand that they are, in fact, open. There were questions asked about, what about cut-through traffic? Obviously, if you close the intersection, similar to what was done at 11 Mile and Coolidge last year, on occasion, you will get people that will try to cut through. We've been assured by the police department that there is a simple way to solve that by putting a police car in the parking lot for a temporary period of time, and that will discourage that type of activity. We are going to be putting out, as Derek had said, news of your neighborhood flyers in the local vicinity for everyone. It will be posted on cable TV. And the news of the neighborhood flyers will be bi-weekly to let everyone know what's going on and if there's any changes in the schedule. The contractor is here this evening, if you have any questions for him. They believe that the schedule is something that they can comply with. And if you'll recall, we did put in there a penalty clause of $5,000 a day if they exceed the deadline date. The cutoff date is August 13th for the completion of the project. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Councilmember Plaid Onson?
I think part of the discussion we had about the previous intersection was that there were times when perhaps the weather wasn't right, but we were hurrying through and things like that, that may have contributed to its failure. Are we concerned about this sort of accelerated timing and how that might impact the final product?
There is enough of a window here that the pours can be made based on weather conditions. It's not something that -- you know, obviously, once they get pouring, they'll want to continue pours. But if we do get a weather situation, we do have enough flexibility in there to be able to pull back. We've also indicated right in the specifications, and this was approved by counsel, if you'll recall, that if they need to, they can pour 24/7, weather conditions allowing, to make up if they had problems with weather.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Councilmember Stedman?
I have a question about the base underneath. As I remember, when that was put in, besides the nine or 10 inches of concrete, there was an underlayment under that, a wire mesh or something?
There was some steel that was in there. When we drilled the cores, the steel was down at the very bottom of the bed. There was also some concern about that existing concrete. If you take a look at the road, you can see some undulation there. We're not sure when we peel it up, just what's there. That was the reason why we believe, and I think the Concrete Association felt the same way, that the safest bet here is to pour a new slab and make sure we don't have that situation.
And what happens to that steel?
That will be pulled out, and basically, the concrete below, as well as the asphalt layer and the brick, will all be removed. And in the contract, we also indicated that one pallet of brick will be salvaged and stockpiled, at least one, if we can get more, we will. And provided to the DDA or to the city DPW director, can be used at other locations that you so desire.
Okay.
Also, the four corners, the intersection repairs, that is brick, and that will be taken up and put back down. So the brick around the perimeter is going to remain. The road brick will be replaced with concrete and stamped concrete crosswalks.
Now, one more question about the stamped concrete. Does the construction company have this stamp? Is the city going to purchase that stamp?
The construction company, under the contract, would provide the stamp. The city does have a stamp, previous work on 12 Mile Road, which could be utilized if we want to use the exact same pattern. That pattern can be purchased. And the color, we did ask the DDA, and they want the same color as what was utilized on the 12 Mile Road stamped concrete work.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Thank you. Tom, what is the difference in lifespan, say, if we went mill and overlay versus, you know, the full 10 inches of concrete?
When you do the mill and overlay, one of the concerns that you have is you're going to mill it three inches into that 10 inches of concrete that's down below there. They want you to put -- Concrete Association will tell you, they want to put an asphalt binder in there to separate that so the crackage from down below won't reflect through. And then you pour five inches of concrete on top. So you've got a concrete sandwich with asphalt concrete, similar to what you had with the brick. There is the potential for some cracking there. The service life, when you talk about mill and overlay on an asphalt mill and overlay or even a concrete, we usually say 15 years, you might get 20. If you're talking about a brand-new concrete road, an 11 Mile, for example, that they're pouring in, the normal service life is 25 years plus. And there's roads that are concrete roads in Michigan that have been in 50, 45, 50 years. It just depends on, you know, the amount of use, how much wear and tear they take.
So we're looking at what is potentially much longer use out of doing this. We got a favorable bid. In your opinion, it's going to be a quicker repair?
Yes.
And it seems like it's going to last longer?
That's our feeling, and that's the feeling of all four parties, that we asked the other three to give us their opinion, and they all felt the same way.
Seems like it makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's obvious that we need to go with the full tear out, because looking at the intersection, you can see that there are surface problems and there are subgrade problems. I mean, there's something underneath there that's not right, and it's probably deeper than the asphalt binder that's there. So there's a fairly good chance we've got some serious deterioration in that base concrete. I think this is the only way to go, is to tear it all out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you again for coming out tonight, all of you, and for your time in educating us on this and bringing us up to speed on the progress made in the conversations and framing this dialogue for us tonight. Most of my questions have been asked so far. I had a couple of small things, a little minor point in terms of the communication outreach. You mentioned some excellent channels already, and I'm sure it's part of the plan to leverage the social media aspects of, you know, the Facebook and Twitter and things like that, in addition to the other mechanisms. Any opportunity to reach out is welcomed. I was glad to hear of the opportunity for saving some of the pavers. I thought that might be interesting for repairs elsewhere or for souvenir value, because that's been an important part of the city for the last almost 10 years. And so I'm glad to hear of that part of the plan. Likewise, the mention of an additional signage as you approach the intersection from the main arteries, I thought I liked the idea of the perimeter as described, to have very clear and legible signs. And then, as you approach the intersection, have additional signage, again, to remind folks in case they reach Berkeley from one of those inner roads as opposed to one of the main avenues. So I'm pleased to hear that's part of the plan as well.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple of little quick questions. There are $30,000 here for contingencies. There are $30,000 here for contingencies. Can you tell us what is meant by that?
When we do a construction contract, we put a contingency on there, and we typically would use 10% of construction cost. For example, if you dig out the whole intersection and you find there's a big void under there from the water main break that occurred a few years ago, and it has to be filled in, that's something that couldn't be anticipated until they open it up. They would bring in stone, and that would be covered by the contingency. On a typical project, contingencies run 1%, 2%, 3%, but that's there just in case you find something. Or, for example, contaminated soils, that can happen. An old gas station site that might have been there years ago that leaked, that can be out into the soil, and when you tear it up, you may have to take some contaminated soils out, that covers it.
Now, one of the issues you indicated in the past was that that steel mesh ended up on the bottom of the 10-inch concrete. What assurance do we have that it's not going to end on the bottom again?
We're not going with a reinforced concrete. It's not necessary for a road of this style. This is going to be a non-reinforced 10-inch slab, exact same pore type as you had at 11 Mile and Coolidge.
Okay, very good. And my final question is a two-part question. The first part of it is, you talked about a flat of bricks will be, whatever it's called, pallet. How many bricks are in a pallet, roughly?
That's our total, you remember?
About 500.
How many? Six hundred.
Five or 600.
Yep.
Now, what are we going to do with the remainder of these bricks?
Many of the bricks, they're going to be going in there with a loaders and hauling that brick out, and there's going to be asphalt adhering to the bottoms of those bricks. They're not going to be clean when they come up, obviously. And many of them are broken, and chips are broken. Those are required under the contract to be hauled away by the contractor. If the city desired to take and clean some of those additional brick, I'm sure we could talk to the contractor about stockpiling that material, but it's a tedious process to clean them.
I'm not suggesting that we would want to do that, but there might be residents who might want to put something around a flower garden or something and might want 75 of them. They have already paid for them. Perhaps we might be able to work something out with the contractor whereby, at least, we'd have a supply of those available to people. If they wanted to take the tarmac backing, or whatever it's called, off for their own purpose, why couldn't they?
Tony, do you want to address it? You're welcome to it.
If there's a place to stockpile?
Mike, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. If there would be a place to stockpile the bricks near the DPW for their...
We could certainly do that.
We have no objection to...
Well, what is the sense of the council here? I mean, should they be made available if people wanted to come and get a supply?
We may want to explore how they're coming up.
Oh, yeah, a process.
See sort of how that's working, and I'm happy to get involved in that, to see if they're coming up and pieces that we could salvage.
Okay. Councilmember Blanchard.
Also, it'll be interesting to find out if we can get a feel from our residents, if anybody is interested, before we start stockpiling a bunch of these.
Absolutely.
So if we've got residents that are interested, and we can get feedback, that would help us.
Mr. Deeds, come to the microphone, please.
Okay. My name's Doug Deeds. I just got nominated onto the beautification committee. There are plenty of places that you can use those in the city of Berkeley. Decorative, and I'd be willing to go through and clean some of those bricks. So, yes, I would definitely like you to, you know, stockpile a bunch and then go through and clean them, and if we need any more, then, you know, we can first come, first serve.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Platten.
From an environmental perspective, obviously, anything you can reuse that doesn't end up in a landfill is good. If it's practical, if it doesn't compromise our timing, worker safety, anything, then, you know, that can be a win-win.
I'm sure the contractor will be very happy to deliver them to the DPW yard instead of driving them to a landfill, because it's going to be a quicker operation for him.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. An additional question, again, back to the communication with the businesses, and I think that's, again, important to remind all the residents and patrons of the city that those are indeed available and accessible. So with that, my question, you mentioned about the public safety support to ensure those drive-throughs are kept to a minimum. One of the many uses of that intersection has been emergency runs of the, you know, emergency vehicles from the hospital in Beaumont. Is that, can you shed a little light on that approach?
We had meetings approximately six weeks ago, six weeks ago, with Beaumont and with their hospital ambulance provider, and they have indicated to us that that is not a concern of theirs, as long as they know the dates. They, all their runs are done by GPS, and all they have to do is input that in there, and they'll seek alternate routes automatically. So they said, as long as we post them, as part of the notice, that will be included in the GPS on their ambulance runs.
Excellent. So effective communication on our part ensures smooth operations on their part.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
We have met with them.
Good. Any additional discussion, questions? Very good. Well, thank you all for being here and for providing the information that's so helpful to us in making this decision. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M. 3512?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platten?
Yes.
Odeweire?
Yes. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. 36-12, matter of considering approval of participation in the Economic Vitality Incentive Program, EVIP, grant awarded to the city of Pleasant Ridge for the evaluation of police, fire, and EMS services and alternative service delivery options between the cities of Berkeley, Huntington Woods, and Pleasant Ridge.
Is there a motion to approve M. 3612?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
You know, council, I know this is something that we have discussed with regards to somehow working together with the city of Pleasant Ridge to at least study the issue of public safety. I know that we have met with the officials from the city of Pleasant Ridge long ago, and that they were very much in favor of examining the public safety model. I know that the city of Pleasant Ridge applied for this EVIP grant to the governor, and the governor very much so wants cities to look at ways in which they can collaborate together. And they did receive a grant of about $132,000. They have amended this grant to also include the city of Huntington Woods as part of this study, and they also amended the cost of the study as well. I don't recall the exact amount of what originally the study would have cost, but I do know that they're estimating at least $50,000 to $60,000 for a study to examine the collaboration of public safety services between the city of Berkeley, Pleasant Ridge, and Huntington Woods. Now, council, please know that this is a grant that has already been approved and given to the city of Pleasant Ridge. What is before you this evening is to simply give me direction to proceed with this study and to inform the city of Pleasant Ridge that the city of Berkeley is interested in participating. By no means is this saying that if we study this, this has been approved. Obviously, we still have to take a look at the results of the study. This will come back to all the cities, we'll take a look at it at that point. So all we are asking the council to consider this evening is to consider studying the issue, that is all. There will be no cost to the city of Berkeley whatsoever, or the city of Pleasant Ridge. As I mentioned, the city manager from Pleasant Ridge did meet with state officials, and they did approve this amendment, so all the costs associated with this study will come from this EVIP grant. We are recommending that the city council consider approving this recommendation. I know that the director of public safety for our community as well concurs with my recommendation, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, discussion? Yeah, let me ask you. The original grant that was received by Pleasant Ridge was for $132,000, and $60,000 of it here for a study. What happens to the other $70,000?
That's a good question, Your Honor. It depends on, it depends on, obviously, what the study says. But those additional funds, my understanding is that they are, they're to be used for the acquisition of some capital and also for training. And I know that we were looking at perhaps purchasing a new vehicle, fire truck of some sort, if indeed this was approved, and also for training of the Pleasant Ridge officers.
So are you saying, then, that money is there in the event that the communities decide they're going to move further on with this?
Yes, sir.
But all we have to think about tonight, then, is the fourth step, a study of this and see where that goes? Is that...
Correct, correct.
Okay. Any other discussion on this topic? Councilmember...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for keeping us abreast of this conversation. I know there've been a few conversations over the past year or so about this, so this won't come as a complete surprise to folks. And a few folks that have come up to me to talk about this issue, you know, were aware of it, so it was good that they did so. There wasn't necessarily a strong sentiment of support for moving forward, but at least there were a few folks that were aware of this, so I thought that that was, you know, that was a great start. You know, so I'm not in favor of this tonight, but I just thought I would explain a few of the thoughts that I had around this and at least clarify where I'm coming from, so that my colleagues can think about their positions as well. So let me start again by stating what it is I'm absolutely in favor of. And what I'm absolutely in favor of is the regional collaboration, partnership, working together amongst the cities. I know that's an important agenda that we've had long before the EVIP initiative came to be. We had been stellar examples of that, and I'm proud of our track record and continue that pace. I'm equally proud and a strong supporter of the public safety model. I know ours is fantastic, and it's been well-received in here within the community. We've seen tremendous benefits of that across the state, and even international visitors have come in to study our public safety model as a beacon of wise policy and prudent management of such an important function. So I'm very much in favor of that. I'm also of very strong favor of the feasibility analysis, the feasibility study process. As you know, I've helped with our, again, back to our regional partnership, secure grant money for transit study along the Woodward corridor. So I'm absolutely in favor of the study process after much discussion. So we applied for that grant after years of public discussion and interaction with folks. And so that's a little hint of where I'm coming from on this piece. And I also like to ensure that there are no foregone conclusions. So I appreciate your line of questioning in terms of the next steps. If such a study were to reveal one outcome, you know, what would then be the options going forward? And I did happen to see the letter dated January 20th, which list itemized the items on the original, and you mentioned it had been amended. And I was pleased to hear how it was amended to include Huntington Woods. Again, back to the region, I think that's great. The original study amount was for $12,000, so to go from 12 to close to 60, I think, is good. But then, as you mentioned, to have the extra funds right there, you know, to make that equipment, I was hoping for a little bit less of that sort of foregone conclusion kind of thinking that went into the grant application. I don't know as much about the company that's doing the study as I'd like to. I've heard that they're more of an implementation firm rather than a study firm, but I don't know if that's true or not, that was just something I came across. So certainly not basing it just on that. And I am glad to hear, you mentioned that it did go through the state approval process to get the change in the grant. I don't know if we've actually seen it. I do know from the transit work, as we had changes in scope to go from just our stretch of Woodward to the entire Woodward corridor, we did need to have the proper signatures and approval and writing and all of that stuff. So I would imagine that those would be in place, or else it wouldn't be before us here What I wasn't sure about the study, if it was a binary option, back to the foregone conclusion thing, if it was this or nothing, or if there are other pieces in there, what about if it made more sense for Berkeley and Pleasant Ridge, or what if it was for Berkeley and Huntington Woods, or Huntington Woods and Pleasant Ridge? Would we be prepared to engage in those conversations and accept the outcomes of those recommendations if we were to pursue those alternatives? So I had a question on that. I didn't read anything about those alternatives in here, but maybe that was part of it. So where I'm going with all this is I think it's the right idea to work together. I think it's the right idea to embrace the public safety model. I think it's the right idea to have the feasibility study. For me, it's more about the specifics of this process, you know, how we got here with this particular grant and these particular circumstances. I'm uncomfortable, just my opinion, just uncomfortable moving forward based on that. I just wanted to, you know, not just vote one way or another, and just kind of at least clarify where I was coming from. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Platten.
That was fairly well said, so I'm just going to piggyback on a couple of elements. I, too, walked into this reading about some of the data that would be available and being really drawn to the idea of being able to take a look at areas of improved efficiencies and having all of that information available. The challenge I have is, especially, you know, in the work I do, the process is key, and if you begin with a flawed process, you always end with a flawed result. And what's even included, if you separate out the money for implementation that's available once the study is complete, you still have, within the study proposal itself, under request for services, some implementation items. Develop an action plan to present to all union members. Develop an action plan to promote the consolidation effort with city residents. And in terms of a foregone conclusion, I think there are a few things that are clearer than some of those statements in terms of where they hope to go. And it's hard to get results that were not, perhaps, ill-gotten when beginning in this manner. So I think, you know, perhaps with some additional information from the company or with a different way of going about this, I would be more comfortable with that. However, I'm just not comfortable with the process that we're undergoing. So if there was a way to get this data and to research this, I would be more than happy to participate in the study process. I'm just uncomfortable participating in this study process.
The only thing I'd like to just simply state, council, is that the consultant that we are working with, they're called the International City Council Managed Association, they're part of that. This is a world-known organization. They have done studies all over the United States and abroad. As a matter of fact, they're the group that brought the people from Switzerland to our first, to our community. They conducted the study for the city of Royal Oak recently, and you've seen a copy of their report as well. So they have excellent background in terms of their work. I have spoken to Mr. Leonard Muddlin, who will be doing some of the studies, and I'd be happy to address any concerns that you may have to him with regards to the procedure and the process. But I don't think there'd be a problem with that if I elaborate with him some of the concerns that you may have. But the process that he's using is very similar to the process that he's done before in the past, so he has the experience. He has been a chief himself, and he has also worked as a public safety director himself, as well. He's been on both sides, so he understands the process very well. So please know that this organization that we're looking at to review this study has an excellent reputation and one that I'm confident that when we come back to do the study or look at the results is something that, at least, I think it'll give us a start. As I said, this is not the end-all, this is just a study. This will tell us whether or not this is going to be feasible. Now, just so you know as well, originally, when the city of Pleasant Ridge applied for this grant, they asked for a lot more monies than what they were awarded. I'm looking at their grant, and I believe they asked for $225,000. So it's not, you know, complete or total. you know, complete or, or total, obviously, but the governor wanted to spread out, uh, as much as he could, uh, of the monies that were available. So, again, this is just to assist, uh, the cities with some of the needs, uh, in terms of some of the things that they, that they needed. So, again, this is just a study. It is a beginning, and, uh, we will come back to you and, uh, if this is approved, for further discussion.
Member Tim.
Thank you. Um, I share some of my colleagues' concerns with, with some, some parts of this. Uh, however, I guess my, my concern here, or my question or comments, I guess I'm gonna ask, and if anybody can answer it, I would appreciate it. Pleasant Ridge was given this grant. We're included in it along with Huntington Woods. It doesn't cost us anything, and it's not binding us to anything, correct? ICMA is doing it. I've never heard a bad thing about ICMA, not necessarily their, you know, public safety, um, wing, uh, but I haven't heard anything bad about, or disparaging about ICMA. With that being the case, what, and Chief, I don't know if you have any information here, what is the downside to us accepting this? I mean, I guess that's, if, if we do it, because it, to me, it just seems like it's a study. And granted, as I mentioned, I have some questions, but it's a study that doesn't cost us any money, that's gonna come back with some information that doesn't bind us to anything. Um, I mean, where's the downside to voting no, or voting yes, I should say, uh, if we, you know, approve this? Why not?
We don't see a downside at this point. Again, we were done. This is no cost. It's informational. We will be providing information. Uh, our input will be from myself and from Deputy Chief North. Lots of conversations, providing statistical data for the study, informational data as to how we work, how, how our system would, would go if there were to be a consolidation. Uh, we're not obligated to anything. Again, on the informational side, we could learn some things. Maybe there's something we could be doing better for our own operations. Uh, they've been involved, my understanding is, in many consolidation studies. We may be missing something. We don't think so, but it's always possible. So it could be informative for us. And again, in the end, this could keep open options, point the way to possible consolidations efforts that could benefit Berkeley.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, if I might follow up on, on, uh, that question. The ICMA, are you familiar with that outfit and the quality of their, of their work?
Through the manager, yes.
Yeah, okay. But you're aware of?
Yes. And I had met with Leonard Muddries. Uh, we have had several discussions relative to how he goes about his studies, uh, and his background. Very objective, very thorough. Uh, so I'm, I would look forward
Okay.
to what he would come up with.
Very good. Councilmember Platt Onson.
I, I think if we were looking at, um, knowing exactly what kind of, so with a little bit of a background in demography, you can frame numbers in, in any number of ways. And, um, I always think in terms of, uh, when I'm looking at data and decision-making, if I, uh, walk into the kitchen with the mindset that I want a cookie, I can most certainly make a case to myself for having that cookie. And so the arguments that you're making and the data you're pulling and the way you're framing the data may or may not help tell a particular story based on your original mindset when going into something. So that would be my concern. Is this, yeah, is this data going to be the, um, purely unbiased data that we need to make such a hugely important decision, or will this data be something that has, uh, just enough bias to it based on the framing of the study that, um, it could skew our future decision-making? Now I kinda wanna cookie.
Of course, that's a reasonable question. Uh, but when somebody proposes to do a research project, it's either going to be a quantitative study and therefore by the numbers, or a qualitative study that actually gleams more information, uh, from the participants and much more subtle. Any study, any research study has to stand on its own findings and stand behind them. So the process, the mechanism by which they reach their conclusions will be subject to all our review. And therefore, if it doesn't meet research standards, then it falls of its own weight, in my opinion. Councilmember Blanchard.
I'd just like to add, thank you, Mayor, that without the study, we'll have no data.
Right.
That's my point. We need, we need to get some background, which we don't have now. And I think the study is important to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman.
Um, we've been talking about this for a long time, this sort of consolidation, and I think it is time that we got some data. And I applaud Pleasant Ridge for going after the grant and including Berkeley and Pleasant, uh, and, um, Huntington Woods in it. So, um, I will be voting for it.
Councilmember Baker.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just, uh, some excellent points, and, uh, I do agree and think the, the quality of the report, the ICMA, I mean, a few of us have had an opportunity to see this, and if it's a testament to the, the caliber of the, of the, uh, quantitative prowess that they could bring, then I have every reason to believe that, you know, as written here, this kind of a thing is quite impressive. Again, um, the objections that I have to this are very little with this work, but it's more of just the process by which we got here. And, uh, to, to your point, um, if the only thing on the menu is a cookie, then that's, then that makes your options pretty clo- pretty closed in the, uh, when you're entering the kitchen. Uh, and, um, although, um, my colleague is exactly right, the, the notion of, um, consolidation has been discussed in many forums, uh, over many years. I think a broader, uh, public dialogue, um, before entering the kitchen would be helpful so that as we look to see the different kinds of options we have, uh, it's a, it's a collective journey. Uh, and so that's, it's, again, it's more of a process thing for me, um, tonight. Again, I, I, as I mentioned, I, I love the notion of working together. I'm very proud of our public safety, uh, model, and, uh, and I think that this kind of study is right, if framed properly. Uh, and again, concerns about the extra money and, and that kind of thing are just what's holding me back tonight.
Very good. Any additional, Chief?
I would just like to follow up on something you said, Your Honor. Um, there's a qualitative, uh, element to this besides just quantitative data. We're practitioners. We speak the language. We would see the lacking of qualitative, uh, format here. We would understand if this data was simply numerical and meaningless. We will understand that. Uh, and we will likewise understand, uh, the thoroughness of the study as it'll address the qualitative issues. So, and we will obviously
Thank you, Chief.
be very careful if this study were to come about and we get a finished product. We will be involved in it all along. We will know which direction it is headed, and when there is a final product, we obviously would, uh, scrutinize that very carefully before we venture a conclusion, and certainly a recommendation as to proceed or not.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Anything?
Yeah, yeah, just one final point. Again, um, I appreciate, and I can gather from my colleagues which way this, this vote might work out tonight. And I think that's important 'cause as I read the, uh, the mayor's, uh, the, the, um, city manager's cover memo, it speaks about in order for Pleasant Ridge to accept the grant, approval from all three cities is required. Uh, so if, uh, you know, so I'll vote tonight, if we were to vote against this, then this grant could not be accepted according to the, the memo.
May I clarify? That's a good point, Your Honor. When I wrote this memorandum, that was my understanding, but I have spoken with the city manager, and that's not quite correct. So thank you for clarifying that for me. Uh, it is a grant that was given to the city of Pleasant Ridge. So I suppose, since those monies actually belong to them, if they wanted to conduct a study, they could. Uh, they're asking for our participation, and that is what we're, we're doing this evening, Your Honor.
Well, if I may, and thank you for that. And, and, you know, there's no additional cost. I like to frame it that way, 'cause obviously coming from the state, those are our tax dollars, so we've actually paid in to do this anyway, right? So I just wanted to, to get that in there. So it is good that if we do choose to proceed, at least it will be getting a recovery of some of the funds that we did in fact help bring this to bear. I'm sorry.
Councilmembers.
Just, just one final thing. Uh, the grant is available now for us to gather information, so I think it's very important that we take advantage of it at this point.
Okay. Have we exhausted all the angles here? Very good. Then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-3612?
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Uh, Baker?
No.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
No.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Doyle?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion carried, that's correct. Now, we come to the communications portion of this evening's program, and I think, Councilmember Baker, you're up again.
I'm up again. I get the lucky draw. Well, thank you, I think you're getting, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to begin, um, close to where I left off last time, um, again with gratitude. Um, thank to all of you who participated in the recent Bowling for Kids' Sake, Bowl for Kids' Sake event at the Hartfield Lanes. Uh, Berkeley was the proud, uh, home city for an event to support a very worthwhile organization. Big Brothers Big Sisters, uh, Foundation chose Berkeley to, um, host one of their, their large events to help raise funds, um, with some sponsors from, um, DTE and S3 Strategic Staffing Solutions. Were able to, to fill the whole wing of the bowling alley with excitement, with energy, and with, uh, the roar of bowling pins, uh, shattering beneath the, the, okay. Anyway, it wasn't me, mine was in the gutter, but, uh, but what was fantastic about this, $22,000, that event alone, $22,000 for Big Brothers Big Sisters, uh, thanks to the generosity of the participants, uh, and those who help support the participants. So I want a big gratitude to all of those, um, for helping support that. So thank you. Um, on the transit front, it's been a few weeks since I've had the opportunity to, to provide an update. Um, the federal officials were in town today, as a matter of fact, to meet with, um, leaders from Detroit and the counties, uh, and our, um, legislative delegation was in town from, uh, Washington, uh, to talk about primarily the, um, the M1, um, light rail system, which is in the heart of downtown, um, and, uh, and also about the Regional Transit Authority, or RTA, conversations that are going on at the state level. Um, the, the M1 folks had a timeline to put together a plan, uh, to, um, to propose, um, how to construct and operate a, a light rail system, a 3.4-mile light rail system in, in downtown. Um, this was reaching the end of that, uh, timeline, and they, uh, provided some materials, you know, plans and, and schedules and, and, and maps and things like that, uh, for the discussion, uh, today. Uh, the good news was it was very, um, thorough conversation, very engaging dialogue with the business owners, with the, um, the transit, uh, folks at the state and federal level. Uh, and, um, and the good news is they've extended the, uh, the timing for the M1, uh, folks to, to cross a few Ts and dot a few Is as well, another 60 days, uh, to work through those processes. Um, and one of the largest, um, stickling points was something that the M1, um, uh, leaders have the least amount of direct influence on, and that is the progress with the Regional Transit Authority, RTA legislation. Um, it's gained a fair amount of, uh, popular support. Uh, we talked earlier about the need for public outreach, uh, when doing these kinds of things. Uh, and, uh, there's tremendous amount of that. It's the, uh, the political will through the Senate at the moment. It's, uh, it's, uh, working its way through, uh, those, um, committees. So, uh, what we can do to help is, uh, please feel free to contact your elected officials at the state level. That's what they're there for, to help listen to folks like us and do the kinds of things that, that will help us all. Uh, and if you'd like to know more about the RTA, the Regional Transit Authority, those kinds of things, I don't know everything, but what I do know, I'd be glad to share, and I'd be glad to help put you in touch with those who, who know far more than I, uh, if I can't help you. So please reach out to me or others, um, associated with this, and please reach out to your, um, your state elected officials to encourage them to advance the Regional Transit Authority, um, legislation as well. Uh, and final, finally, Harold Kushner, the rabbi and author, once said, "Caring about others, running the risk of feeling, and leaving an impact on people brings happiness." And again, that's caring about others, running the risk of feeling, and leaving an impact on people brings happiness. Uh, and what spoke to me about that is, is the caring about others and running the risk of, of actually feeling. It's like, it's like, oh, is, uh, here in June, uh, we don't actually have, um, a proclamation, but it's, um, it's National Safety Awareness Month. And when I think of all the opportunities we have to, to care about one another and to offer, um, uh, words of encouragement and, and, and counsel in the day-to-day things we do, right, to, to help ensure we lead, um, safe and happy and productive lives, um, this rings very, very true to me. Whether it's things that we know we shouldn't be doing, like, you know, texting while driving, or, you know, those kinds of things, it's, it's, for those who find themselves tethered to these kinds of things, it's very tempting. Uh, so my process, you know, I put mine in my pocket or in my bag, so I have no opportunity to easily do that. But, you know, it's even things like, uh, wearing a, a bicycle helmet when riding your bicycle, right? Especially if you're a parent, you have the opportunity to set a positive, uh, example and serve as a, as a role model for, uh, for your children, if you have any, and, and for others around you, just to do those little things to, to be safe. I mean, life is too precious to, uh, to do something silly and put yourself in harm's way, and, and, um, you know, we should try to be safe every day of the year, not just, uh, here in the month of June. Uh, but I thought I'd take this opportunity to, to invite you to, to join me in, in caring for others and, and running that risk of actually, actually feeling, uh, for others. So with that, I feel like I should yield. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Um, I did attend the bowling event, uh, and was on Councilmember Baker's team, and it was, it was very nice. So, um, it, when it comes around again next year, I hope we have even more participation. Um, Monday, June 18th, uh, I think, I believe it's from 6 until 8, is the ice cream social at the library. And, um, that's always a fun event, so, uh, families are welcome to go up there and, and have some ice cream, um, from 6 until 8 o'clock, two weeks from tonight. Uh, the book sale was great at, uh, two weeks ago, two, a little over two weeks ago now, at, uh, Berkeley Days. But, um, be aware that they're going to have another book sale. This one will be at the library in October, so you can start thinking about donating both paperback and hardcover books to this sale. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Highness. If a question, do you, you buy 'em at Berkeley Days and read 'em and donate 'em for October? That's the plan?
That's right.
Just keep 'em going in a circle?
That's a good plan.
Thank you. Member Tim Terbrecht.
Um, we have an Art Bash coming up, but, uh, I, I didn't know if you were gonna mention that, I was actually waiting to see. No, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you discuss it as, as Mayor. I mean, I'm sure everybody, uh, residents are aware, um, of the Art Bash and what a fantastic event it's become every year, and it gets bigger and better and more attractions and more people down there. Um, that is coming up this weekend. It's, it's the second weekend in June. I believe that's, that's the, the set time. Um, so that is coming up. I hope to see everybody there. Hopefully, the weather will, um, cooperate. Uh, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Platt Onson.
Just a couple of quick things this, this evening. Um, one, I was, uh, able to participate in the Environmental Advisory's Spring Ride, while they cooperated, and we got a great crowd for that. Um, the children got a little bit shorter ride than the rest of us, so they got their food a little faster. But it was, uh, great for all ages, and they're going to be doing another one of those in the fall, and, um, hope to see even more people out for that. Lots of bike helmets along the way.
Yes.
Um, also, uh, to, to piggyback on the Art Bash, don't forget that the, uh, Environmental Advisory Committee hosts a free bike valet. So, ride your bike up there. Instead of attempting to find a post that isn't taken or something, um, ride your bike to the bike valet. They will park it and watch it for you for free. And, uh, then you can wander around and enjoy the, the afternoon. And we're supposed to have fantastic weather, so perfect for walking and riding. And then finally, uh, several of us had the opportunity to attend a tasting at the new Vincent de Gras restaurant. Um, and while, uh, a media outlet did report that it was Royal Oak's, uh, newest restaurant addition, um, I will say that it's, uh, these types of businesses that really help put Berkeley on the map, and it's, uh, getting some great press. It's going to be a great asset for our residents, especially those of us who are close enough to walk. Um, and so these specialty businesses that, um, that become destinations are great for attracting people to other businesses, uh, to shop, et cetera, um, and great for attracting residents. So, um, fantastic to, uh, everybody who went into putting that together, and I wish them great success. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Sessa.
Uh, Council, oh, Mr. Mayor, I know you're probably going to, um, talk about these items, but I guess, uh, I thought what, uh, you were gonna talk about was the lids for kids. I thought what you were going to talk about was the Lids for Kids, speaking about bikes. So that's coming up.
Amazing.
It's the same day, safety thing. It's, the Saturday is going to be extremely busy for the city of Berkeley. There'll be a lot of activities. We're hoping that we will come and enjoy. The Lids for Kids program is something that our Public Safety Department has worked for many years, and any child or anyone, really, that wants, that needs a bike helmet, it'll be provided to them at no cost. Our public safety officers on their own have gotten together, raised funds, and they do this for residents, and I know that people from the outside as well, they can come in and, small people, I know, the small, the small ones, to come in and get a bike helmet. But I know the mayor will probably elaborate a little bit more on that. But I just want to make sure that the public knows, you know, again, please visit our website at www.berkleymesh.org, because you'll be able to get a lot of this information on there, especially information about our summer day camps. There's so many things that are happening in Berkeley. I'm hoping that the residents will participate. And I, too, had a chance to visit the new restaurant in Berkeley, Vincenta's Garage, and their food was amazing. So I encourage everybody to go out there and taste their food. It's outstanding. You gotta try it, Jeremy. It's excellent. I didn't get to try their desserts, but I will go back, as they say. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Sabuda.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Ripoff. Nothing this evening.
Ms. Schneider.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things. First of all, I had the opportunity of attending the baseball opening day parade put on by the Dad's Club. Now, the Dad's Club, Berkeley Dad's Club, have been in existence in our city since 1948. And this year alone, six, almost 600 youngsters were lined up in the parade and also eager and ready to play baseball. So I think as a community, we owe a great debt of gratitude to the Dad's Club for their dedication, their leadership, and their commitment to sports and the development of youngsters in our community. And in addition, to the employees and volunteers who maintain our ball fields, there's a lot of work goes into maintaining those ball fields and having them ready for the youngsters to play in. And so, and the ball fields look very well maintained. The Art Bash was mentioned. It's, you know, a signature event, of course, in the city now, and brings in a lot of visitors in addition to our own residents. The Lids for Kids program put on by the public safety officers is important in several respects, in one of which has been referred to by a couple of my colleagues tonight, the issue of safety, you know, for youngsters. But for our residents to remember that the public safety officers do this on their own time. They sponsor a golf outing to raise the money and then are able to purchase these safety hats. So it is important, and as Councilmember Baker said, it's important for parents as well to model safety, you know, when they're riding around with their youngsters and do wise things. And also, I'd like to congratulate my colleague here, Councilmember Baker, on a significant promotion at DTE. We're very proud of your achievement, and I know very well, they know what they're doing when they promote you to this level of responsibility. So congratulations and the best of luck in that venture. Thank you. And our other colleague, who is not with us this evening, Councilmember Kiddekel, I understand is watching this program live via the internet. He is out of town, and so we wish him a safe return home. And if there aren't any other questions, then Ms. Prince, would you, a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Platt Onson. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
June 4th, 2012 meeting of the 34th Council is adjourned.